Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? A hearing on all of the favor of approval of the minutes of June 16th.
I looked at them. I thought they looked pretty good.
I'll make a motion that we approve them as presented.
All right, is a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Rob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unfortunately, our road commissioner is not here tonight, but he asked Heidi, the treasurer, to bring up one or two subjects real quick.
Yep, so, um, he asked me to let you know that he's working on getting bids for paving Walker Mountain.
Okay.
He also asked me to let you know that the road crew has been cleaning and rip wrapping ditches on Walker Mountain Road to get ready for the paving, and that roadside mowing is ongoing. Um, the only other thing that the board needed to discuss tonight, with the transition from uniforms to not having a formal uniform service anymore, UniFirst, so, so the cash has been trying to figure out how they're going to handle shop rags because they've always used UniFirst for their shop rags. And UniFirst has come back and said that they're, they would be happy to do a contract for just the shop rags, that they could pick up and drop off once a month for 23 bucks a month. And then, um, you know, they'd launder them. We wouldn't have to figure out whether to throw them out or to launder them or, how to launder them ourselves, that kind of a thing. Cash was in favor of it, but, so that's something, um, if you want Katie to pursue a contract for that, that you guys would need to decide on, I guess. And then, hopefully, maybe she could have a contract if you decide that that's something you would like to pursue by the next meeting.
Right, um, any board members disapprove of, uh, going to-
Say a letter, let her hammer out the details and we can do it next meeting. Talk about it next meeting.
Do it next, next meeting, uh, because they, they gotta have something down there.
Yeah, and we gotta have something hard and fast before us that we can-
Right.
Okay.
Decide.
Okay, so I'll pass that along to Katie, um, and she will get with UniFirst for that. And that's all I had for Cash.
Okay, I had, uh, one individual, Gail Gillum, had emailed me a couple times, uh-
She's emailing the entire board, by the way.
Yes, I know. But, um, I did, uh, respond. She's concerned about her driveway and, uh, how the, I guess, the either the front or the rear end of her car when she comes out of the driveway has an issue. So, uh, I think that we'll have to get together with, uh, Cash and one select board member and go up there and look at that and see if we can't have some kind of remedy. Uh, I went by there a couple times today, so I was looking at it. And it, um, looks like their driveway is also, uh, the end of it, just before it hits the road, is raised up too, so I'm not quite sure if it's entirely
A town issue?
Yeah, town issue. But I, I think that the best thing to do would be to meet up there. So, um, at some point, I'll have a conversation if nobody has any objection with Cash, and then we'll try and arrange a meeting with, uh, Gail up at the end of her driveway. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Whatever it takes, I would just, you know our policy, we don't go outside the towns right away when we're working on anything, so-
That's right.
If it's outside the towns right away, it's the property owners.
Yeah, this is, this is definitely where the driveway connects to the road.
Okay. I'm just talking about, you mentioned a hump further back in the driveway.
No, I, that, when I said that, it's, um, it's probably still within the town right of way. At one point, I think that Gail and Cash had talked about possibly putting in a covert there. So she's concerned about how that process is. I tried to explain that the as far as I know, over the years, uh, our policy is the landowner pays for the covert.
At cost, yeah.
And the road crew establishes that covert at the end of the driveway.
Yep.
The reasoning is, that's a long time ago, uh, was that some people were putting covets in and it wound up being humps and every other thing.
No, it's been that way ever since I've been here. I know we, we did an update, I think, i- in how that policy was worded, but the policy itself at the time did not change. It was still, it had been in place prior to that.
Yeah, a long time.
So-
And, um, I tried to explain that to her, that, uh, after the landowner pays initially and the road crew puts it in, if it's damaged somehow because of storms or something else like this, then it's the town's responsibility.
Correct.
And, so I just wanted that on the record, that, uh, so that if Gail says, "Well, I haven't heard anything." Fact is-
And that's been that way as long, like I say, we, I know we, and I saw that email too. I think it was 2016, maybe, that we updated something within the policy, but the policy itself did not-
The basic-
The wording, something had to be changed in the wording, but the policy itself had not changed at that point.
No, we didn't get through that in any big way at all.
It's still the same as it always has been, that the landowner purchases the first one.
Yes. So-
And again, I think we need to be clear, when they purchase the first one, it's at the town's, it's the discounted rate. It's at the town, it's not like we send them out to go buy their own-
No, no.
They purchase it based on the town's discounted price that we can get.
Right.
And they don't pay, like you said, they don't pay for the install. They just buy the covert itself. We, we put it in.
And then if there's any damage, like I said, ongoing with the covert, uh, storm damage or whatever-
Yep.
Then it's the town's responsibility.
Yep.
All right, so that's, I just got that on the record, and thanks, guys, for the discussion. Uh, I'll try and set something up with Cash and Gail. Is there any other questions for the road commissioner, or any points of interest?
I will make mention, I don't think the pothole Bob mentioned last meeting has been filled yet. I think-
No, they haven't got to that, uh-
There's a pothole by, um-
Scott Brook.
Scott Brook, right next to the bridge. That's getting worse, so it needs cold patch bad.
Yep.
All right, um, if there's nothing else under Highway Road Commissioner Report, I, um, I, the Select Board warrant is floating and drifting around here. Um, make sure we all sign it before we leave, and it looks like we have already. Um, there isn't any guests present, uh, no public for public comments. So, moving right along to all business, cemetery maintenance update. Do you, do you have any?
Um, I think that's supposed to be just an update based on the visit you and Bob, did you go to, and Katie-
Yes.
Went and met with CJ from Johnson's.
I'll read this briefly. Administrative Assistant Katie received a text from CJ on Johnson's, uh, refuse in lawn care on Thursday, January, or June 17th, in response to the emails she had sent them, with pictures of possible damage, uh, that they may have incurred while mowing the cemeteries. CJ requested to meet to the, uh, talk about the current situation. Selectmen Bixby and Claption, as well as Katie, met with CJ on Monday, June 21st, at Chippen Hook Cemetery. And, um, basically, the board members, Katie, CJ, and his foreman walked the Chippen Hook Cemetery property and noted minimal damage. The damage that was noticeable was most likely done with a weed whacker. CJ said that he and his workers would be even more careful. CJ explained that he had been mowing cemeteries for more than a decade, and the damage shown in the pictures, the majority of it must have been done by past contractor. Katie pointed out a headstone, uh, that was leaning against another headstone and asked if Johnson, uh, was responsible for the placement. CJ said he had found it broken and laying flat on the ground, and he didn't want to leave the stone like that. Katie reminded, uh, them that if they find that kind of damage, should report it to her immediately so that the board can address it. CJ addressed the brush that needed to be removed, um, and what that is, is there's some, uh, trees and stuff that had fallen down, and, um, we asked, Bob and I asked if, uh, they would be available. We do have money in a budget for extra work, and, um, so, it's around a hundred and eighty dollars for removal of those trees and brush. And, and, uh, just for the record, um, is there any board members that have any issues with that, or?
Get it done.
Get it done.
Get it done. No, that's what we discussed and, uh, what we looked at. Uh, as far as the markings on the stones, the, the only one that I really see that would really look fresh, there was one that might have been weed whacker up there on the north. Remember, we're coming back up. That was the only one I really see. He mentioned they use, uh, what'd he say, 105?
Yeah, it's a, it's-
Wine, twine.
Oh, okay, the heavier stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and I've been wondering, you know, if maybe around them old stones, maybe they should be dropping down to 80 or 90.
And that's-
I don't know if it would do any good. I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference, but- Probably not, but it just crossed my mind.
And that was part of the discussion we had with him when we were there. And, uh, he would, he was, but he said something about, he was gonna consider that, but, um, he, he's very self-conscious of the fact that these are old stones and stuff, and he-
Yeah, yeah.
They've been really careful. Uh, for me, uh, if I may, Bob, um, a lot of that damage, while it may have been with weed whacker and stuff, most of it that I saw looked like it was a couple years old.
Or older, because-
Could have been even older, yeah.
So-
Yeah, because that very slow, I wanna say, uh-
All the moss and stuff-
Yeah, yeah, for, for nature to, uh, cover it up, it's, it's very slow-moving. It don't happen one year or two years. It takes time.
Yeah. So, I think that we wanna pass on to Katie that, uh, you know, just to get back to them to say, yeah, the, the board officially, because it's within our budget, and I assume, uh, Heidi, that you're looking at the budget, you know, and we did allow, uh, in the past, uh, extra work. Right, so, anything else under that, Bob?
No, that covers it.
Okay, uh, moving along, approve the updated personnel policy.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the updated personnel policy, uh, as well as print a copy for each employee with a signature page that they signed stating they have received it.
I will second.
As well, by the way.
Uh, you second that?
I will second that, yes, because I've read through it too, and it looked like it, uh, everything we've discussed-
Word for word, just about, uh, from last time.
And we all have to sign that?
Yep, yep.
So it's been a motion made, been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Just sign this and then we'll get to it. Pass it down here, Bob, and we can sign it.
Okay.
Throw it back to the other troops. Now the next fun part. The Mill River Union, whatever the hell they call it, school board stuff. We had, uh, long discussion, and we did have a, just an update, we did have an election, and the election, uh, um, was done, uh, in March, and, um, the person now sitting in that empty seat that George vacated is Andrea Hawkins. We did, however, in open meeting, discuss that the possibility might be there for us to vote to get out of the district. However, after doing a, a lot of, um, discovery, let's just use that, with the state, with our lawyer, our legal folks and stuff like this, we come to find out, so that the public knows this, if we go to a vote to get out of the district, and a majority of taxpayers in town vote to get out of the district, then it goes back to the school board, and the school board, uh, members from other towns will then also vote as to whether or not we could get out of the district. And if that fails, if they say, "No, we want the town to stay in," the last option, of course, is to go to the state, and the state then would consider whether or not the voters in the town of Clarendon can get out of the school district. So for me personally, I wish that I had known all of this information before it was even considered forming a union district. Uh, I'm not very happy with this, the way it's turning out. I don't know, I, I would like to hear other members' concerns or opinions. Bob?
I'm not happy with the, having to do the special election to appoint school board members. And there's some other issues up there that I won't go into, but, uh, they're kinda gnawing away a little bit. But I think, uh, before we vote, I think I'd like to, uh, get a little input from the other three towns. See what they've got to say. I have not heard an awful lot from them. I don't know if you have, Mike.
Uh, the only time I heard something was before we had the special election. And that was when I was down, um, getting my second shot at the Holiday Inn.
Yep.
Um, there were a couple folks, one from this town and one from, uh, Timoth. And the person, that individual from Timoth didn't agree with the school board at all.
Yeah.
So, but that, I, other than that, that was the only conversations I had, uh, have had with anybody from any town.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda think, uh, I, I know what you're saying, and I can't say you're wrong, Mike, but I think I'd like to make sure that good investigation is done before we jump in, because we did jump in to form this district without knowing all the information. Am I correct?
Well-
Let's, uh, let's, uh, make sure we got all the information before we vote to get out. That's all I would say.
Um, it, we did, uh, ask Brian Collamore to investigate this, and he went right to the state office.
Yeah.
And, uh, it says, "The, your email regarding the ability of the town to withdraw from Unified School District was forwarded to me." The individual, I can't remember, she's from SDS or whatever the hell it is. Um, "The basic process from a very high-level view is as follows." And I'll just touch on this real quick. The voters residing in one town within the UUSD vote to withdraw from the district. If the vote is in the affirmative, then the voters in each of the other towns must vote whether they agree to the withdrawal. If the voters in each of the other towns, as separate, independent town-based votes, vote to approve the withdrawal, then the matter goes to the State Board of Education for consideration. The statute provides the State Board with very little discretion regarding, uh, the members that wishes to withdraw. Essentially, the State Board is required to permit the withdrawal if it determines, if it determines, students in a withdrawal town will have access to schools. If approved, the withdrawing voters are reconstituted as a town-school district organized to provide for the PK through 12 education of the resident students. The State Board then must determine whether it is in the best interest of the state, the students, and the remaining towns in the district, for the district to continue to exist without the withdrawing town. If the State Board determines that it is the best interest, then the Union School District continues to be a Union School District for the students residing in all of the remaining towns. If the State Board determines that it is not in the best interest to continue, then the State Board dissolves the Union School District and reconstitutes each of the town districts. The withdrawal effective date of Newtown School District is the next July 1st or as soon thereafter as the obligations of the withdrawing district have been paid to, or an agreement made with the Union School District in the amount satisfactory to the electorate of each of the other towns and cities within the Unified School District. So basically, I don't know how many hoops, if you wanna count them, at least three, but then it, there's a lot of, "If this doesn't work, then this won't work," and we got ourselves with a promise that is gonna lower us the taxes. I'd ask the, the, Heidi, the treasurer, to say, "Have the school taxes been down since we've had this Union School District?"
Um, every year since I've been treasurer, the school taxes have increased.
I don't know, you know, I really, I don't know what to do with this now. I'm, I'm not confused, I'm just tired of it. It's all BS to me. This, it, when they say, I looked it up, uh, in our reports, um, both in, as, in the Select Board Minutes, as well as, uh, zoning and all this kinda stuff, and found out that this town sold that Union School District for a dollar, the school property and all this other stuff. We have copies of it all. I have-
You're talking about the elementary school, right?
Huh?
The elementary school.
No, the high school as well.
I thought the high school was always in the district.
The height, no.
That was already Union.
That was our, because that was US District 40.
Yeah, right, there's other stuff. Went to the Union for a nominal fee.
It was the, uh, the elementary school was the big thing.
Yeah.
Because the elementary school would have been retained by Clarendon because we had our own school board for it, right?
Right, but if you look at that, according to what I was reading, now I may have misread that. Um, so if you guys, Katie has it all bound together, but I, maybe you're right, you know a lot more about that kinda stuff than I do.
No, I'm just assuming, because I know even when I was at Mill River, it was US District 40. So, I mean, it's been, it's been US District 40 for a long time.
But the, the property was owned by the town.
For the high school?
For the high school. That's what I'm talking about.
That's my question.
And, and that was, but it's not now, because they paid a dollar. And, uh, John signed off on the elementary school, and I can't remember who signed off on the, for the high school. But that was, uh, Farm Fields, and they s- said whose names that owned that property and stuff.
It was part of Holden Farm, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, by, by the squires.
Squires, yeah, squires.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then, um, for the elementary school, it was, what's the name that, where Joe, um, Peterson lives now, owned the Al, where the-
Oh, part of the-
Yeah, yeah, part of, part of it was from that, and, uh-
He signed off on that property as well.
Yeah.
So, but it belonged to the town.
Yeah.
But now, it belongs to the Union-
Now it's, it's part of that district.
Yes, because it was a dollar.
Which, uh-
Such a deal.
I, I can't say that I totally agree with it, but that's the way it was done, and, uh, the people voted to form the district. You know, uh, it wasn't, uh, any one select board or any of the school members or anything, the, the town citizens voted to do it, uh-
And when?
I, obitutely, I wasn't real pleased about it, but, uh-
Me either.
I got outvoted, and hey, you know?
Yeah, but when it was put out there for vote, what was the big selling feature?
Of lowering school costs.
Yeah.
Which, what did I tell you at that time, Mike?
Yeah, I know.
It's never gonna happen.
Now, if we go right back to the question, does this board, at this time, still wanna consider getting out of this Unified School District? Ask the voters. And it wouldn't be anything we could deal with until next March, I believe.
We've always done things by asking the voters.
Right. But I, but even to go that route, the Select Board has to come up with a decision as to, in my opinion, I could be wrong, otherwise, somebody out there has to get a petition together, to petition, to get on the ballot, to get us out of the school district.
I think that we protected Clarendon's voice on the board-
Right.
-recently, by having our special election. And I think that going forward, we need to just make sure that that voice is protected and continue to allow our people to vote for their representatives at the ballot box.
Yes.
Next, next March, there will be more school board members that will be up, and the people can vote at the ballot box.
Yep.
I don't think that right now is the time to pursue this, especially with the amount of hoops that you've found have gotta-
Yeah.
Go into, but I think that, um, we need to continue, if, if a situation was to ever arise like what arose the day after elections this year, I would do the same exact thing that we did.
Right.
I would vote for a special election in a heartbeat, so-
Right.
We need to just continue to protect Clarendon's voice and, um, go that route. So I, I don't think that a withdrawal discussion right now is probably the direction I would go.
No, and then, that is why I said what I said earlier, I'd like information from the other towns. What would they do in the same situation that we were in? You know, uh, but, uh, right now, I gotta agree with Robert, I don't think we should be looking to pull out, but be very aware of what is going on with the school board-
Yep.
And the whole district.
What do you think, Rick? I want your opinion.
If it was easier said than done, I would have got out yesterday.
Yeah.
And now you've brought up all these hoops. Doesn't sound like it's gonna be easy. Are all the towns that are in this now, one question? Are they the original founders, if you will?
Of this uni-
Of this unified-
It's like this one.
Shrewsbury, yeah.
Shrewsbury, Womiford, Clarendon, but-
Yeah.
Timoth, Timoth, Timoth got added, though, right?
Yeah, they got added.
I don't, they were not, they were a school choice town up until the unification, right? I think, so, I think you're-
I'm all for school choice.
I think your one, your one addition, I think, is Timoth. But otherwise, they're all the same.
And they had to be voted in by the school board?
Their, their people.
Their people voted them in to join?
Yep, voted to join.
But, so there had to be somebody else that said, "Yeah, let's let them in"?
And for, for our town, it was, we thought, a big money-saving deal and everything. For the other towns, they were promised that their school buildings, their elementary schools, were established already, my understanding, and, uh, that those buildings would still be secured, this, that, and the other thing. And they would also, their taxes would go down too. And they would also, their taxes would go down too because everybody's paying.
Well, it sounds like Clarendon got the worst end of this deal. And, um, yeah, I think we'll keep watching and keeping the back of our voters. And in our town, see where that road goes. Maybe today isn't the day to do it.
No, I agree. So I think the four of us sitting here tonight will not put this to bed, but we'll let it rest and see what has, what transpires.
I'd like to find someplace where a town did get out of a school district just to see what their ropes were or hoops were. I don't think there is any.
All right, let us move along. Financial maintenance agreement, Kingsley Covered Bridge. And a note here is discuss lighting and fire retardant options for Kingsley Covered Bridge. Um, when we had the individual come down here, a couple individuals come down here and we talked about what we would, might do for those issues. Now I see we have this, I, this is the first time I've seen this. Did Katie send this out to us? I don't, I don't even remember reading.
The only reason I know that is because I was copied on it.
I don't remember getting it. I don't, I don't recall seeing that.
I think that's what I picked up that day I came in, wasn't it?
I'm not sure.
I think so. You need to lower your tone.
When we had this discussion, we, we didn't say anything. We kind of talked down the lighting in that bridge, I thought. And the fire retardant options, I don't remember us.
There was a mixed opinion on lighting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. If I recall on the Zoom call, there was probably two or three that were vocal against it. And then there was also a decent number that were vocal in support of it.
Yeah, right, the, I don't know, to me, I guess, uh, light maybe on each end of, end of the bridge wouldn't hurt nothing. Interior light, that kind of takes away the nostalgia of the old bridges. People have known it for a hundred years.
Been dark for a hundred years.
The concerns were apparently some people have come onto the bridge and there's been pedestrians on the bridge walking and they haven't been able to see them.
Yeah, but.
And they thought lighting would solve that problem.
The biggest problem with that, you come into that bridge and it happens more in daylight, I believe, than at night. At night, your headlights are on, you'll see them. You come into that bridge in daylight without headlights. It is dark in there, I'll admit, but we don't want lights on during the day either.
I wonder.
The modern cars nowadays, their lights will automatically come on, mind you, when it gets dark. We get a dark thunderstorm, they'll come on and then they'll go back on.
Yeah, but that bridge, enough of sunshine and you've got to be in there a bit before they come on.
Let me briefly read. This agreement is made by and between the state of Vermont acting through its agency of transportation with its principal office located at Barry and the town of Clarendon with its principal office located on. And it says, whereas the state proposes to submit to the Federal Highway Administration, United States Department of Transportation, federal aid project known as Clarendon BO fourteen forty-three, the project, which will provide improvements at the location. Uh, project located, we know where it is. It says, whereas the municipality desires the improvements as described above, whereas the municipality further desires that the state act insofar as necessary for the municipality in preparation of plans and construction of the project. Now therefore, it is in consideration of the premises and the mutual agreements hereinafter set forth, the parties here to agree to the following. Allocation of funds to the project at all costs of the projects except those which are non-participating shall be paid with eighty percent federal funds, uh, and seventeen and one-half percent state funds and two and a half percent municipality. Now this is, the, the way I'm reading this so far is saying for the main cost of that bridge, that's what the, it's going to be. But then when you jump ahead, all these little lighting and all this, the municipality will reimburse the state for one hundred percent of all non-participating project costs and for two and a half percent of total participating project costs, inclusive of preliminary engineering, right away, utility costs where applicable and participating final construction costs. The municipality acknowledged that underruns or overruns in item quantities during construction as well as changes orders during construction may increase or decrease quantities. Uh, the municipality will pay the state on behalf of monthly progress billings received from the state.
Yep, so what, what they're talking about there is, do you remember when they did the, the last presentation for the public? And they gave you that chart that said, this is the project cost, this is this lighting option, which is this cost to the town, this is this flame or retardant option, this is this cost to the town. So you, you folks have already been given that, those dollar amounts to be able to make those decisions? And they also told you that the cost, the, the base cost breakdown that they gave you included some of those or included the recommended options. Um, I don't have that sheet handy with, like, right at my fingertips. Um, and just a side note, she did send it to you on Thursday, the seventeenth, and last Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
I think without the other paperwork, we're going to have to table it until next meeting.
Um, the email that she sent on the seventeenth, she did say that while this agreement needed to be signed at this meeting, she wasn't sure if this is the meeting where you should be discussing the lighting and fire retardant options. Um. But she knew that a decision hadn't been made, which is why she brought it up.
I don't think it has to be because if it did, they would have had to left you a spot to fill it in.
Yeah.
This is just your agreement.
That's just the, the overall contract. But we, but we have not specified, and that's what Heidi's talking about. Um, the individual lighting and all this other stuff.
But I, again, I don't think you have to decide that tonight based on what I'm seeing. This is all your standard right away that they're going to figure out if there's anything that needs to be done. This is just your boiler pri- we, we signed this for the, um, bridge over on the, um, by McCormick's over on the hotel. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the agreement between the state and the town of Clarendon with regard to Kingsley Bridge.
Will we all sign it?
Yep, we all have to.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
One spot says, yeah, right there, municipality. We each have to.
Yep.
Take a section.
Damn it.
Um, I will work with Katie to get the information sheet that had the associated costs with each of those options to you. Um.
I thought I had them.
I think we should just get it done, put it on next agenda to decide the lighting and the.
Yep, right.
Eat it up.
What'd you get into, Michael?
The, I don't know whether because of the candy or what the hell.
It could be.
Sometimes when it's real humid like that.
Humid, yeah.
Because the last time I broke my nose, I fixed it myself. So.
With the other fess?
No, I just put tape over it. I broke it three times before. You know, I have an idea what I do. I just set the cartilage back.
Yeah, that's all.
Wow. When it's real humid like that, then if I wear glasses, then it screws up my.
Oh, okay. Pinches a little.
Yeah. All right. Uh, appointments for Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Um, we have Bronson Spencer. He's looking to get reappointed. So is there a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Bronson Spencer as the Clarendon representative to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Second.
Is there a second?
Here?
I'll second.
Hold on in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, then we have Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Council would be Dave Potter and, um, Robert Bixby.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
See how fast that went?
Yeah, if I told Heidi, uh, Katie I'd do it.
All right. Next thing is assign the sheriff's department contract. Uh, Rick, do you have anything you want to speak to this about? The contract?
I don't, I don't think so.
We all have to sign it. It's pretty much.
Is it officially in order now with what was voted on?
Yes, the, the, I did confirm that the figure is correct.
Yeah.
It was, it was the, uh, well, go ahead and make your motion and we'll discuss it.
There was an issue with it being higher than what was voted on. So it had to, it had to be corrected, correct?
Oh, was that a?
The initial contract that we received, uh, included a one and a half percent increase. Um, at budget time, we were presented with a one percent increase. Um, and so we pushed back to the sheriff's department and said that we're bound by the voters.
Right.
Um, so there's really nothing that we could do about that. Um, and so they, uh, Sheriff Fox did adjust the contract accordingly.
Good.
Make a motion that we approve, does the whole board have to sign?
Yes.
Uh, and that the board, full board sign the sheriff's contract?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any further conversation? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against this motion? Sounds like we have a passed motion. Go this way, no, I'll go this way.
Okay, send it down, I'll sign it and then we go the other way.
Is the Johnson contract in order as far as you're aware? Make a motion that we approve the Johnson refuse and lawn care contract for fiscal year twenty-two?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. Second it down.
There's a few places that we have to sign. Uh. Uh, it's the select board chair and one side spot, select board chair and another. What is, how come there's all these three different?
It's probably just all the addendums.
It's like they're all you, so I'll amend my motion to be the chairman, sign it on behalf of the board.
That's okay with me.
All right, hold on in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Part of the paperwork, the reason there's additional paperwork is because there's workman's comp waivers and things like that.
Okay.
That we have to have in order for our insurance company.
And it says here, in the presence of a witness.
You need somebody to sign as a witness?
Yeah.
I can sign as a witness.
Okay, wait a minute. So many signatures here.
Do they all need a witness?
Yep. Sounds like a nineteen-sixties song. The last one, you don't need a witness. Municipal representative signature. I have one. All right, we have some fireworks permits. Um, the first permit is, uh, Sherry and John Sylvester on Airport Road.
Think we done that one last time, didn't we?
I don't know, uh, it's here, so.
No, they did something for a birthday party a few weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
So this must be a different, this must be for the Fourth of July?
Yeah, July fifth, it says, indoor six. And.
Indoor six?
Indoor six, yes. July fifth, indoor six for one hour or less.
I don't have the thing that you said.
And the next one is Mike Lee or Lee on Misty Meadows. And that's for July fourth. And we have all the same things. And the last one is Nick Nguyen on East Demuth Road. Um, and that would be July fourth.
I don't think we've had any issues with any of these individuals, so.
No, not really, you're just, well, you got the thing here depending on the conditions where you are, and then that's on, on the permit, so.
Oh, yeah, when they signed all off on this, then they agreed essentially.
Right.
Uh, for those days and, uh, as you pointed out, Bobola, what you're supposed to do and not supposed to do, so.
I'll make a motion, we approve the three fireworks permits for Fourth of July weekend.
I'll second.
Select board chair, I'll sign it.
Chair, I'll sign it. I'll still second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, Heidi, do you have anything you want to report?
Um, just that we're closing out the fiscal year, so the treasurer's office has been busy. I've provided you each with a budget status, uh, for where we are at. Um, depending on what we get in the mail for bills, we may or may not do another check run this week. Um, hopefully not, we seem to have captured most everything. Um, and as always, any member of the public can certainly request a budget status at any time. Happy to answer any questions for anyone.
What's your overall view of the budget? Are we rock on or are we a little above or?
We had budgeted to reduce the fund balance by a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And it looks as though we've reduced the highway fund balance by about eighty-six hundred dollars. Um, and as of right now, we have, um, we've retained a little bit into the, the general fund balance. We haven't reduced anything. Part of that comes from, we were able to do, um, the majority of our projects this year with the help of grants. Um, and we were able to accomplish some, uh, things in the office this year also due to grants. So we really, with all the grant money we were able to receive, um, we cut spending quite a bit. Um, which on the expense side, it looks like the budgets are over expended, but if you. But if you net that out with the grant money that is received on the revenue side on that first page, you'll see that, um, we did really well. And also, um, Kelly has continued to bring in delinquent tax collector money, um, so, so that has also helped.
The road, um, budget, how, how are we doing on it? Now, I would assume that a lot of the grant money went towards the road stuff, but how are we doing? On a, how, are the guys, you know, staying close to budget or?
Yeah, no, they're doing very well.
Good.
Cash keeps a really, um, close look at everything and there's constant communication between us as to where we stand, so.
Anybody have any questions with Heidi? Rick, do you have any concerns?
I don't.
Well.
Nothing to think.
Sounds good.
Think I'm good, other than, uh, Heidi done a good job here getting this out to us and I guess we're gonna have to be satisfied with it. It looks, it looks pretty decent to me.
Done good, Heidi.
Again.
I think the only thing I'll state before we, uh, make the last motion of the night is just that everybody have a safe and healthy, uh, Independence Day, celebrating our nation and I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
They're second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Better not be.
Well, just thank you, thank you to Robert, hope his holiday is good and.
All right, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?